There we go. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the fourth week, first night, first forum last week of our candidate forums for the League of Women Voters of St. Lucie County in the 2020 election. I'm Andy Polley. I am the current president of your local League of Women Voters, and thank you all for joining us. Just have a couple of quick little reminders for everybody before we get started. So, let's see, mail-in ballots went out September 25th. If you have already requested it, you've probably already received it. If you have not requested it, you have until October 24th to do so. You should probably do that as soon as possible, just in case, you know, there's some mailing problems. But there are also secure drop boxes throughout the county in which you can drop off your ballot, so you don't have to mail it back. Early voting starts October 19th. It's right around the corner. Five locations, same five locations throughout the county that existed for the primary elections. Any St. Lucie County voter can vote at any of those election locations. Election Day itself is November 3rd. If you choose to vote on Election Day, you must vote at your assigned precinct. Visit the Supervisor of Elections website to find out what place that actually is if you do not know. Tonight's forums, we have two of them for you tonight. We're going to start out with the County Commissioners District 5 here at 7:00. And then at 8:30, we're going to move on to the State Reps District 84. These candidate forums will be conducted in the same manner that other candidate forums have been conducted. There'll be a 90-second introduction from each of our candidates, followed by a series of questions, two minutes each to answer by each candidate. And if we have a little time between then and when we're all wrapped up, if you post questions on our Facebook Live feed and they're appropriate, we will ask them of the candidates on your behalf. As we get closer to the end time, we'll then move on to closing statements, two minutes per candidate. They will rotate, and the order of candidate answering was predetermined by coin toss prior to us going live tonight. As always, our wonderful moderator for this evening is Carol Wyatt. Carol is the co-owner and operator of radio stations WPSL in Port St. Lucie, WSTU in Stewart, and WJNX in Fort Pierce. She is also the president of the WPSL Christmas Kids of St. Lucie County, former president of the Rotary Club of Port St. Lucie, and a member of the Port St. Lucie Businesswomen. She has lots of years in broadcasting, including as a reporter in Los Angeles prior to moving to Florida in 1993. And as always, we are super happy to have her with us again this evening. So with that, I'm going to kick it over to Carol.
Thank you, Andy, and welcome to the League of Women Voters of St. Lucie County Candidate Forums. We want to thank the members of the League for coming up with the questions for this evening. We thank the candidates for participating, but we thank you for listening, for watching, and for informing yourselves before the general election, because this is a challenging year. Now, tonight, we have St. Lucie County Commission District 5. It covers a lot of territory in western St. Lucie County. The office is for a term of four years, and it is a countywide race. So the candidates, the incumbent Kathy Townsend, Republican, the challenger Henry Duhart, Democrat. And by our predetermined coin toss, Kathy Townsend will go first with opening statement.
Good evening. How are you, Carol? Thank you for doing this. And I know you've been doing it a long time. And thank you to the League, because I know that the League does really work hard at trying to educate the people and voters. And I also want to thank the League for what they did for recognizing the 100th anniversary of the woman's right to vote. That was very important, and it was well perceived in the community. And I'm a product of that, right? I'm a woman that's serving in office because of the vote of 100 years ago. So those are all good things. So I am a mother. I'm a Florida native. I have two children. I've lived in St. Lucie County for 30, almost 34 years now. And I have currently been serving you and partnering with the great people of St. Lucie County as their Commissioner in District 5. We have seen a lot of growth on jobs, and we've done such a good job. We've actually created to where we have enough jobs here that we need people to do them. And so that is something that we're trying to overcome, and we have things in place. And I'm proud to say that the county is heading in the right direction. We have schools, and we have scholarships, and we have everything else available. So I'm looking forward tonight to getting to know Andy a little bit better and to hearing what everybody has to say and what the questions are. And thank you for doing this.
Thank you for being here, both of you participating in this. Mr. Duhart, your opening statement.
So first, I want to thank the League of Women Voters for this opportunity to present myself, this platform, and the Be the Change movement. And I too just thank the League of Women Voters for all you've stood for for many, 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 many years when it comes to the rights of women throughout this nation and throughout this world. For me, you know, it's very important, it's going to be very important that people understand that right now, more than ever, we need innovative type thinking. We need leadership that can be within the box and develop outside of the box. And that's why when I first ran, I really dived into the political specter to understand how communities were. And I have operated as a supervisor or management for different presidential campaigns, such as Andrew Yang, who ran for president this past cycle, working on PACs such as Next Gen America, and also supervising a PAC called Progressive Turnoff Project, where we hired about 30 people here locally to do canvassing work in our community. And from that experience, I've been able to travel to Mississippi, New York, New Hampshire, AKA I hate snow, but I've been able to travel the entire country and see what other communities like ours need, which is a progressive leader. So that is why I think it'll be very important to create, you know, a safe, a healthy, and a working community. And that's why I want to create a committee that supervises and gets that word out into our community about the COVID resources, home security as a human right, and for working communities, we need traditional and vocational training to a bigger extent. And I want to lead that and do what I would stand for the people, healthy, safe, and working communities.
Okay, thank you. We'll go to the questions. The first question, we'll start with Kathy Townsend, and we'll rotate from there. But starting with Ms. Townsend, St. Lucie County homeowners recently received their annual trim notices. If the proposed budget changes are accepted, many will see another increase in their property taxes. St. Lucie County already has an average property tax rate higher than 88% of counties in America. So what will you do to reduce the tax burden to citizens?
Well, that's a, thank you for asking that question. And I was the commissioner that actually voted no to raise the millage rate. And I was the one that clearly stated that because the residents voted no on the additional homestead exemption, and they also voted to give us the HECS sales tax, and with property values being up 10%, we should, we should be giving back. And, you know, as a commissioner, I am one of five that sits up on that board, and it was a four-to-one vote. And so this year and moving forward, we did lower the millage rate, and it's still not enough. And with the homestead exemption at 6.5%, and then the increase of what it can go up to, even with the small reduction you're going to see this year, everybody's taxes are still going to go up because property values are up 6%. So I will continue to fight for the residents, and I know that we can lower it. I know that we can readjust our budget. I know there's ways to still cut things. And as long as our property values are raising, and they're rising, there's no reason why we cannot lower the millage rate. So what I plan on doing is, we're in our five-year, five-year strategy plan, and I'd like to see over the next five years, a decrease each during the millage rate for us to get where we need to be.
Okay, same question to Mr. Duhart. What will you do to reduce the tax burden to citizens?
So first and foremost, I don't agree with raising taxes. I understand that many people in the community are, you know, going through a lot right now. And, you know, it is just, and I would like to see the taxes increase, you know. However, that's not the best economic solution for where we are right now and what we're facing with COVID. So for me, instead of us in front here talking about increasing or lowering the tax base, I think we as county commissioners can be focused, you know, keen focused on increasing the tax base. So that's why I want to make sure that we make St. Lucie County the most attractive place for homeownership in our county, so that we can build more homeowners throughout our county with mixed, you know, types of housing and affordable housing. So that way, we can increase the tax base in our community. We can create more homeownership throughout our community, and we can build our tax base that way, instead of trying to argue right now what to exactly do concerning that. Because right now, we're facing a crisis that if we decrease or anything, we know, who knows what we're losing, what resources we're going to give up. So I think it's best to stay balanced where we are, but to make sure that we're increasing the tax base by creating homeownership throughout this county and working with the things that we already have, like the ADLARM tax program. We have impact mitigation. We have a lot of different things that can help both the business community and the local residents. So I think it's, you know, economically smart to, you know, really increase the tax base instead of arguing back and forth about whether to increase it or decrease it. But I'm not for increasing it. I am for increasing the tax base by creating affordable housing and making us more attractable and making more people homeowners throughout St. Lucie County.
Hey, next question, we'll start with Henry Duhart. COVID-19 has impacted St. Lucie County in many ways. Beginning with the economy, what will you do to help business and workers recover from lost revenue, lost wages, lost businesses, and unemployment?
Yes. So for me, I think we need to begin to work with our local business community with helping people with a few things. I think marketing strategies and really enhancing our capabilities to market, promote, and get our businesses, whether it's a food business, whether it's within retail, whatever you do. I think what we lack is the understanding how we can really brand our county in a way to benefit the communities and the business community moving forward. So me being a person who really knows how to use social media and use the new tech advancements to build myself, I will work with organizations such as the Chamber of Commerce, local organizations that work in our downtown, our entertainment districts, and see how we can make sure that even post-COVID, we can build our community by educating them on marketing, promoting in the 21st century. So I think that's very beneficial, but also we should take things such as grants and make sure we are very adamant about going out to Tallahassee or out of the state to bring back those grants, that funding we need to support our businesses. So I'm very much so for building a place that we can market and promote our businesses in a more futuristic and innovative way. But at the same time, I'm going to be very adamant about building the relationships and securing the grant funding that we're going to need to provide more assistance for our businesses.
Okay, same question to Ms. Townsend, helping the businesses and workers recover.
So we do have some CARES Act money in place that we are trying to help the businesses with. I would also continue to have that conversation in Tallahassee and hope that all the way from the top, from the federal government, found that there will be some grants available for those businesses. I think it's also important to continue to have the relationship we have with our chamber. They have some programs in place, and they have some, a little bit of funding in place and some grant money that they're able to help. And I think also, we have a small business navigator, and I think we need to continue to work with her in navigating the small businesses, but also to utilize her in a way to be more somebody as a person that will help the small businesses that are suffering, like the restaurants and the stuff like that. The Tourism Development Committee is also looking to form a Treasure Coast chapter here to be able to unify the hotels and the restaurants to be able to help them through a lot of this process, too. It's challenging. I know that there are going to be many businesses that will never reopen because of this. I know that the county is diligently working to try to get the CARES Act money to those that need it. I know that up in DC, they're still looking at some grant funding to be able to continue to assist the small businesses. So right now, we're still in uncharted waters. We don't even know how long this is going to last. We don't know how, we know that it's been very, very hard on our tourism, you know, with our hotels and our restaurants and nightclubs especially. So I really don't know what the answer is going to be, but I will continue to be a voice and to be proactive with the small businesses to continue to encourage their Small Business Navigator. We have some advancements going on with some of our taxes and permits, if you want to continue to reopen. We've got some rental program assistance in place. We've got some grant money in the community housing that can be assisted with some of their rent as well. So it's just to continue to have that conversation with the businesses and continue to let staff be available to them so that we can all walk through this together.
Next question to Kathy Townsend, the impact to the economy will have long-term effects on our community. Less taxpayer money means less net, less tax revenue. How will you manage the responsibility of greater need for county services with less money?
Well, I don't, I don't know that that's really going to be a problem in St. Lucie County. We, you know, we are growing. We have actually had more building permits applied for in COVID-2020 than we have in 2019 or 2018. We have a lot of affordable housing going in. There's a lot of development that's coming in down the pack. We're already planning with our transportation planning organization of our roads and finding a place up through 2045. And so St. Lucie County is really in a great place because we are a sprawling community. We don't have zero lot lands. We're not like Orlando that we are based on tourism. What we have here in tourism is what a lot of our locals use, our fishing, our diving, right? So we are very fortunate to have what we have here in St. Lucie County. And so I don't know that we're going to have that decline that you're going to see in other counties. I think that we will continue to grow. We are a bedroom community, and we have all walks, or we have retirees, we have blue-collar workers. And 60% of our workforce in St. Lucie County travels outside the county. So I don't know that that will be as big of a concern as it is for somebody that is in another community like Orlando, Miami-Dade, even probably Palm Beach or Martin County.
Okay, same question, Mr. Duhart. How do you manage the responsibility of greater need for county services with less money?
Well, you know, it goes back to building a tax base and creating affordable housing, you know. It intrigues me to think that some of the different developments that we've been seeing in this county is affordable for most people. In fact, most people see starting $200,000 and really worry, that's the point for affordability, then where are we going as a county? So for me, I think it's going to be very important, again, to have people who maybe have different kinds of experiences in this county to understand that though some parts of the county are thriving, even though COVID has happened, there are many parts of this county that isn't thriving. There are many communities, communities that do not see that 200, starting at 200,000 as affordable. And though I do love development, I think we need smart and balanced development. So I'm all for condos, I'm all for luxury, but I'm also for affordable housing. And that doesn't necessarily just mean Section 8, or that doesn't mean projects. That means just affordable housing. I would love to own a home here in my community. So I think that it's going to be very important for us to have the type of experience that doesn't come from some of the, you know, maybe, you know, where you are in the community is thriving, but I come from the areas in this community that's not thriving. And I'm going to be that kind of leader that can get those jobs to these, the people in these communities who need it most. I'll be that kind of leader to really develop District 5 into what it needs to be. We should really be thinking about the agricultural industry, how we can bring that back and continue to bring that back like we've done in the past throughout the history in St. Lucie County. We've always come back in agriculture. And I want to lead that and work with the local farmers and the different farmer unions that we have and get people more interested in agriculture. But also, you must understand that tourism is actually a useful thing, if you get ahead of it, to balance a lot of those tax burdens. So we need to think about tourism. We're growing, and to think that we're not growing is actually the exact opposite kind of leadership we need. We need innovative leadership that sees we're growing, that can get ahead of the change, embrace it, and make St. Lucie County that works for everybody, instead of sticking our heads in the ground, waiting to see what happens. Getting ahead of the change so that our people can have a St. Lucie County that works for everyone.
Okay, next question, starting with Mr. Duhart. The pandemic is not over. We're entering cold and flu season. What will you do to protect the health and safety of all of St. Lucie County's residents?
Well, the first thing that I would do with protecting the health and safety, and what I would have done if I was already county commissioner, was vote along with the other four commissioners to support the mandate, which is a nice statistic. There's a 401 where every commissioner, even Commissioner Freddie Hutchinson, who is a well-known Republican, voted for the mask mandate, except Kathy Townsend, our chair. And Commissioner Townsend, you know, again, I've always said that that's where you miss that mark. So what I would do is lead by example. I will also continue to lead by example, like I've been doing, wearing the mask wherever I go. But also, that COVID committee is going to be very important, and I want to have those once a month to get those resources and that information that we need when we get these CARES Act, when we get these funds for people to get it. Because a lot of times, we can say all day that we got a million-dollar grant, but because sometimes not everything's accessible to everybody, and sometimes the websites are not easy to navigate, you know, people don't get those resources. So making sure that our county government gets the resources, but also becomes more accessible and digs their roots deeper within St. Lucie County, throughout St. Lucie County, so that everyone can have a safe and healthy community. So I will make sure that people are informed through my COVID committee, which as county commissioners, we can create committees and boards, and I will spearhead that because we don't currently have that. And also, I will make sure that we continue to educate, but lead by example. And I would never, ever during a crisis such as this, be on a public screen without a mask, because that's, you know, leading by example is very important. It's very important what people see. Perception is everything. So not only will I lead by example, but I'll do the hard diligent work with working with our COVID committee that I would start and work with our commissioners to start, and make sure we are getting the resources needed out to the people, and we make sure we work with our community, you know. And unfortunately, you know, you may not see it as important, Commissioner Townsend, but my grandfather had COVID. He's no longer with us. So for, maybe they didn't happen to you, but many people, and it is an experience. My grandfather is one of those 400-plus people who died from COVID in St. Lucie County or COVID-related issues. So I think it's very important that we have people with the right experiences to make the right decisions for a safer St. Lucie County.
Same question to Kathy Townsend, what will you do to protect the health and safety of all of St. Lucie County's residents?
So I would first want to start off by saying, Henry, I'm sorry for the loss of your grandfather. Nobody wants to have to go through the loss of a loved one, of a parent, or grandparent, or a sibling, or something. So, you know, my condolences. However, I do still stand with my decision of being the no vote on the board, because I, I stand and I believe in our constitution. And I don't believe that I was elected to office to dictate to anybody's life. We, as a leader and a public servant, have no idea what anybody is walking through in their life. It could be PTSD, it could be rape. And so for me, it's about doing the right thing, and it's leaving it up to the businesses to make the decision. It's up to the individual to make the decision and choose what's best for them. You know, there are so many other things out there that are done every day, like smoking and secondhand smoke that kills you, right? And so COVID is real, it's here, it's the flu. As you stated, Carol, the flu is coming, right? And so we're already talking about that. That's one reason why there's conversation to leave, to leave the mask in place. I don't feel I can sit here and support an ordinance of something that has no key and no description underneath it to be able to be enforceable by law. And so for that, I stand that, I'm not elected to office to be able to dictate and tell you what to do. And moving forward, I think we need to continue to educate. We need to continue to have our conversations, relationships with the hospitals and the physicians. We need to continue to be able to offer a mask and hand sanitizer and do all the things that we are continuing to do right now, because our rates and our numbers are low for 320,000 people, and numbers we have are less than 3%.
Okay, next question, back to Ms. Townsend. St. Lucie County's infrastructure, being quite old in some areas, is quite often overwhelmed during heavy rains and hurricanes. That abundance of unmanaged water can have devastating effects on roads, buildings, other structures, as well as the sewer and drainage system. So what steps will you take to modernize the county's infrastructure that both mitigates the impact of intense weather events and is environmentally responsible?
So that's a great question. We actually had a meeting about that today. And so we are looking at the Ten Mall Creek, because that drains a lot of the White City, North Fork area. And we had conversations with the North Fort Pierce Farms Water District, because we recognize that, you know, it had not been kept up. But there's also three and four different water districts involved in that. We can do our part, but if they don't, well, then the system fails. One of the things that I personally have done is I have worked the last four years educating the North County Lakewood Park. Lakewood Park was never a part of the Fort Pierce Farms Water District, and a lot of those people out there never understood why. It took many, many town hall meetings, and it took a ballot for them to be able to decide if they wanted to go into the district. So a lot of education and perseverance, they saw that. And not only were we able to educate them and let them come into the system, we were able to go up to Tallahassee and get 100% of the funding to do the infrastructure, to tie the park and the North County water flow into the Fort Pierce Farms Water District. And I know that there was concern from some of the people, because they can't afford to have anything added to their taxes. So it was really, really important for me, for us, to be able to work together with our road and bridge and drainage, to be able to seek that funding, and we were successful, 100% that's done. We are now going to be engaging in conversations, and, and I know that our system is failing us. I know that we have old roads, and I know that we have to do better in having our road and bridge out there, doing a better job at cleaning our swells and cleaning our drainage, because if they're not maintained and trees fall and bushes fall and people dump stuff in it, and there's failed culverts, that backs up the system. There's people that can't even afford to replace their culvert. So we're implementing a culvert program that we will be able to help you fix your culvert if you can't do it, and we're doing it as a pilot study. So I know that we have the filling system, but I also know that we've already put things in place in the last two weeks and addressing a lot of these issues. And so I am hopeful that we will get there, because I've seen what we've done in the North County.
Okay, same question to Mr. Duhart. What steps will you take to modernize the county's infrastructure?
So I'm, I'm so excited about this part, because one of the first things I said when I first started running is, if this is where our infrastructure looks like above ground, I can only imagine what underground looks like. So I think that what we must do is work with the South Florida Water District and build relationships, not just, you know, not even just have town halls, but as a commissioner, I will be adamant about visiting those people, visiting those boards, talking to them, going everywhere I can to get the resources that we need to do bigger projects concerning drainage. Drainage is very expensive. It is very expensive. But that is why I'm going to work even harder to get that grant funding. I think just today or a few other days ago, we got like a million-dollar grant to extend the, the drainage or to extend the water lines on the island. So it is possible to have an idea, go get the grant funding, just like when you go to college. They always tell you, there's a scholarship for everything if you can apply and apply yourself. So the same thing with grants. This, you put the idea out there, let's do a county, let's work with the cities. Let's work with the city governments, that's for everybody, to build a real structure for drainage and get ahead of it. And do what, find out what that number is and begin to reach that number and to chop it down to where we have a countywide initiative with the cities to build up our drainage, to build up and advance our storm waters, and to make sure that we don't flood every time something happens. It just happened. It just happened. So for me, I think that we need to work with those organizations, bringing that grant funding and do, they talk about a bigger project, how we can fix that. But also, preserving our ecosystem is going to be essential to stopping drainage. When we preserve our waterways and we preserve our ecosystem, these natural things, the trees hold water. So the more trees we have, the more preservation we do when it comes to our different waterways in our environment, the more ability we can allow nature to just do what it naturally does. So I think a mixture of infrastructure and doing, you know, actual projects and developments is going to be important with our drainage and our storm waters, but also preserving our environment and make sure we plant even more trees and protect what we have already so that we can kind of fight them with both hands. And I will spearhead that, and I'm excited to do that. That's actually something very, something very big and something very exciting I'm looking forward to doing, because it's a very difficult problem, especially in District 5, facing that kind of an issue. You know, many people in Lakewood Park would really love.
In a related question, we'll, we'll move on here, a related question, Mr. Duhart. St. Lucie County has a very delicate and intricate environment that is a big part of its appeal to both tourists, residents, and the local economy. So what initiatives will you implement to reduce harm to the water, air, wildlife, and ecological system while mitigating the inevitable impacts of climate change?
Yeah, so what I would do is support the initiatives that we already have, but get more resources or direct more funding towards that. For example, right now, one of our organizations, right now, has began to do small projects to bring back the curb within our oxbows. So learning and listening, I learned that nature and our waterways at one point had curbs until the Army Corps straightened them, which eliminated that natural filtration and a natural way to get rid of all those things before it gets to our work, our oceans and nutrients for the algae blooms. So I will fund projects, small projects right now, and give more funding to those organizations who are doing that work and give them money for bigger projects to straighten our waterways, to straighten our oxbows, and I'll be someone who protects the, the, the ecosystem that we already have. So for me, I think that we need to, as commissioners, get those resources so that we have the funding to do what is needed. A lot of times, it's not that we don't have a great staff. We have a great county staff that are experts. What we must be doing as county commissioners is being able to build relationships, bring in the funding, and secure those plans. We need to secure the bag, is what we say in my generation. We must secure the funding for these projects. And so what I add to that is, I will be somebody who will be adamant about securing more funding for projects that protect and advance and fix the mistakes we made as humans in our natural environment. And I'm excited, I'm excited about that, too. That's why I took a long time on the last one, because that one really excites me. I'm all, I'm happy about innovative ideas. I think that's why people have fallen in love with this campaign, because I'm innovative. I'm born and raised here, and I love this community. I'm willing to learn. I'm willing to learn. I've learned so much in the last two, three, four years of getting involved in politics, and I'm blessed to have the mentors who have the knowledge and I'm willing to listen and grow.
Okay, same question to Kathy Townsend. Reducing harm to the environment while mitigating climate change?
So we have a really good program here. We have underwater reef projects, we have the oyster bedding projects. We have a lot of the water projects here, we have a lot of preserves. We have been able to obtain a lot of grant money to get the preserves. We have a lot of parks. If you were probably to take Martin and Indian River County combined, we have more preserves and more parks than they do. Now, granted, we are a bigger community, but that is one thing that prior boards did, is they went after a lot of the funding, the money when it was available, and they obtained a lot of property. And over the last 12 to 16 years, we've done that. And now, in the last eight, our environmental ERD department has really went out and done the preserves to the point that our preserves have actually become parks, actually. They're beautiful, and they have kayaking and fishing and stuff. And so I think a way to prevent a lot of, moving forward, is to continue to do that, continue to work with our oxbow center, continue to do the septic-to-sewer conversions to get people off the septic, to continue to have developers come in to have to tie into the utilities and not allow septic systems. I think that it's also to continue to have the relationships with Tallahassee and Congressman Mast, you know, where they have the relationships with the Army Corps of Engineers in keeping the levels of the lake and the outflow, because the lake flowing out is what creates the green algae. A lot of these things all come into play, and I think we all need to continue to be mindful of that. And whoever sits in this position, I think that everybody that sits in this position is mindful of what we're going to be moving forward with climate change. And we have to be mindful to make sure that everything we can get into a utility system is one of the first things we can do, and then continue to work with our environmental lands and to continue to keep those flowing, and then to continue to go after the grant money, which is always a challenge. You're always fighting for it from every other county in the state. So let's continue to have those relationships.
Okay, next question, starting back with Kathy Townsend. This is a two-part question. How will you attract new businesses to St. Lucie County? And how will you encourage residents to start their own small business?
So that's an interesting question. You know, we have so many different things around St. Lucie County. We have, you see more of the franchises in Port St. Lucie, and you see some of the mom-and-pops, but you see more of the small mom-and-pops probably in the city of Fort Pierce. And you don't see a whole lot in the town of St. Lucie Village. But, you know, that's what I love about us, is if you want small town feel, you come to Fort Pierce, and if you want bigger, you know, steak houses and everything, you just take a few miles to the south and you're in St. Lucie West or whatever, and you can have the best of both worlds here, plus we have our water and our diving and stuff. So we have a small business navigator, and I would like to see that program grow. We have an amazing economic development team with Pete and Jill on them. They do amazing things. I think there needs to be more education. I think we need to do more filming and advertising and having campuses and libraries and restaurants and places that the general public would go. And if you're sitting there, you have to pick up a flyer and you go, oh, look at this. You can look at that, you know where to go, you know who to contact, you know who to call, and they walk you through the process. That is the key, is when you come here and someone's coming to visit you, Carol, and you're sitting out to dinner, and you're not a business owner, and you're retired, but your granddaughter comes here and wants to do something. If you see the brochure when you go to walk out, and she goes to the restroom and she picks it up, and all the information is right there, she can pick up the phone and call our planning department, get the business navigator, the business navigator can walk you through the process, and it's a welcoming environment for them. That's how we're going to continue to do this. And this is something I know we're working towards, and there's also programs in place also, and we need to work on more programs for small businesses. Because there's a lot for the big corporate, but it's the little guy that needs the help and the handholding, and that's the focus of what we need to work towards in the future, is continuing to hold the hand of the little mom-and-pop that wants to live the dream.
Okay, same question to Mr. DuHart. How would you attract new business, and then how would you encourage residents to start their own?
Okay, so first, I'm sorry to say that I also am the candidate that was endorsed by Boat Waters, so I definitely love that endorsement to speak toward the environmental question before. But this question is so exciting, because the solution is for both the same. We just really must advance ourselves with understanding how you can take social media and turn a trade facility, turn a new business, turn a restaurant. You turn, so many people are understanding how you can create a whole business from your house, run a whole business, whether it's a construction, if you just know how to use social media, tech advancements, the algorithms and things of that nature. So one of the things that I add to the commissions is my knowledge and understanding of that, you know. I didn't laugh, but I thought it was funny that to get information out right now, you think brochures is not the way to get information out. That will continue to allow us to be in the past. Right now, all you need to do is understand social media, targeting, and how to use the data that we have to get the information to the people. That way, people don't even have to necessarily go through our department always. Some people, because we have over 200,000 people throughout this county, people can get all the information we need on Facebook, on social media, on websites. If we make it effective, make it clear, and we break it down. So I will work with the business navigators that we already have, but I also will bring to that department the knowledge and the want and the excitement to advance our technology and our outreach through social media advancements. So I think a website, I think an app, I think, you know, let's start building some bus stops and putting free advertising on it with digital. You know, I've seen it in Miami, I've seen it a lot of places, where you can take things that we regularly do as a county and turn it into a way to promote your local businesses, whether they're big or small. And I think also it's going to be very important for the entertainers and people who we visit in our community to really consider a residential fee, because we got people who put their taxes to these theaters and to these parks, but they're paying the same price as people from out of town. So I think the best thing we could do is prioritize our businesses and really think about it in advance, how we connect people, not through brochures, but through social media.
Okay, next question to Mr. DuHart. Federal and state congresses pass many laws that impact local communities. The laws do not necessarily take into consideration the specific needs and circumstances of cities and counties. The Home Rule grants some control to local governments to govern their own area, but it's often under attack at the state level. Do you agree with Home Rule, and if so, how will you defend it? If you don't agree, why?
Yes. So I believe everything is about balance. There's a reason why we have that tool of Home Rule, because there are certain situations even nationally where the state may have to make separate decisions for the particular state. It allows us as county commissioners and local electives to have a slight power to empower our local constituents specific to issues that we have. I've supported things already in pass that kind of would go against what state currently is being accepted to, whether that's my stance on decriminalization of marijuana throughout St. Lucie County, whether it's my stance on the mask mandate and make sure we are, you know, behold to that, or my stance on any particular thing that aids our community. So if it is needed, and if it's a situation where we, as county commissioners or the city officials sometimes partner with us on ideas, to make a decision that's separate from the state or even the nation, because it protects the safety, the health, and the wellness of our community, then yes, that's when we use Home Rule. That's what it's for, you know. And that's, so I do support it when it's time to use it, and I will make sure I'm a county commissioner who doesn't use that tool, doesn't use these things willy-nilly or just for my, when it's self-interested. I would use it when it's the best time to use it for the people and their safety and their wellness. So I support Home Rule in a situation of, of course, smart use of it. And I think it's beneficial in certain situations. Like I said before, I've already kind of in a way done things that support the city or the county government taking a stance that's separate from the state or the nation at the time. Because sometimes it takes time for them to get it with the times. And because we're so diverse, you got to, there's so much changes happening. And we're an area that's going to face changes in a whole nother way, because we're so diverse, there's so many types of people here. There's so many types of experiences here. So that's why it's important to have representation at the county level so that we can get ahead of these things and just be the kind of leadership we need in St. Lucie County moving forward.
Same question to Kathy Townsend. Do you agree with Home Rule, and if so, how would you defend it? If not, why?
So I am glad you asked that question, because that is the number-one thing that really controls a budget of a county, is unfunded mandates. And that has been a whole controversy up there in Tallahassee for the last two years, because the elected officials up there want something, but they don't want to take the heat for it. So they pass the bill, pass it on to the local level, and then we have to fund it, and where do the funds come from? I totally support Home Rule. Something that's good for me in this county and us in this county is not what the need is in Okeechobee or the need up in the Panhandle. Home Rule is imperative to be able for you to know, as elected officials, what is the best need in public safety for your constituents in the county you live in. I think the way to combat that is to make sure that, A, you have relationships with your elected officials in Tallahassee, so that they know the need. And I think if you elect, I think the key to that is electing the right person to represent us in Tallahassee. If you represent somebody that's like-minded and knows the need of this community and knows the importance of Home Rule and allowing that opportunity to come back to us and us have the voice, and electing that proper leadership to lead us and to represent us in Tallahassee is how we get through this. If you have leadership up there, if it's up there in Tallahassee, it doesn't seem merit with that, and you don't have a relationship with your local elected officials, that's when it fails, and that's when you're under attack under Home Rule, and that's when bad things happen. And so it's important and imperative to be able to vote for people at the House and the Senate and make sure that they live in this community, they work in this community, they play in this community, and they fully know our needs, and you have a relationship with them, so that collaboratively, they are your voice up there in Tallahassee and not put that burden back on you for an unfunded mandate.
Okay, we go now. Apparently, we have questions from our Facebook audience. And let's see, we'll start first, we'll come back to Kathy Townsend. The Black Lives Matter movement has come to the forefront throughout our nation. Peaceful protests happen locally, and there is support for it in this community. How will you address the concerns of this movement and its supporters here in St. Lucie County?
So I'm going to keep my response very brief, and I'm going to say that they have been peaceful. And I'm very, very, very thankful that they have, and it has been a movement. However, I will say that I feel that every life matters. It doesn't mean that a black life is more important than a white life or somebody that's Jewish or somebody that's Italian. All lives matter, and all lives matter to me, and I can't take one life over another. But I do want to say thank you to Henry. I know that he has had that movement moving forward. He has put a lot of those marches together, and he has been very respectful with the rest of the people that have done that. And I am very, very thankful that they have been able to be a voice and that they have kept everything in a very positive light. But to me, all lives matter.
Okay, same question to Henry DuHart. How will you address the concerns of the Black Lives Matter movement and its supporters here in St. Lucie County?
First, let me take my time, because right now, COVID is a dire thing right now. But also racial injustice is rampant in this nation. So let me take my time with this, because I'm going to be leading a community that has minorities. What is very exciting about the Black Lives Matter movement on Treasure Coast, which we have a documentary airing this Friday at 6:00, because we had people follow up with cameras that entire day, that the majority, and 60% of the people who showed up were white, from Port St. Lucie, from Fort Pierce, from St. Lucie County, from Stewart, because they understood that all lives matter. They understood that. What we're trying to say is this is a particular life that seems to not continue to matter, and to ignore that is scary in 2020. So I think that it's very important that you can step into different experiences, just like I had to step into the experience of, though I'm young and maybe I don't feel COVID is something that directly affects me or can harm me, I had to step into the shoes of the senior citizens in our community. I had to step in the shoes of people like my grandfather, understand the need to understand and listen. So I think it's going to be very important for us to have, one, representation. Right now, we have a county commission that is all white, as you would think we're in 1920. We have no representation of Hispanic people, Asian people. And if the entire county commission was black, obviously, we have no representation of white people. We need to have diversity of representation on the county commission. That's the first step. The second step is really having those conversations and being comfortable with having those conversations as leaders, stepping to those communities where people are affected the most. And then I think also that it's important to give ourselves a pat-on-the-back, Treasure Coast, because you did what many in the nation could not do, which was lead. So anytime you see somebody from in the Treasure Coast that says booing, know that is a lie, because on the Treasure Coast, it was smiling, it was happy, and many of those people got very involved afterwards. There were even some Republicans out there. There were shit. We had the Sheriff Department, the Police Department, everyone was out there, because we understand all lives matter. But until you open your eyes to knowing that Black Lives Matter is really important right now, and you can understand that, how can you make real ethical decisions when it comes to race relations as a county commissioner? I don't think you can.
We have another question coming from our Facebook audience, and as soon as I pull it up here. Okay, we'll come back to Mr. DuHart. How will you work to improve the trust and relationship between law enforcement and the community, specifically people of color?
Well, first, you know, you have to be able to step into those places that people say you shouldn't be able to step into or that you shay away from, you know. I, again, every march I had, you know, the Sheriff Department was every, every single one. If I called the Sheriff Department, Mascara or Mr. Bryan, they were there. They had no problems about it, and they came with a smile. In fact, when we had the one at Longwood Stadium, Sheriff Mascara and his department all came there with a board for people to write down concerns. It rained that day, so that didn't work out fully, but they had the initiative. So I think I've been able to show that even though we may have differences, maybe we come from different generations at different times, I've shown that I can be into these areas and have an open conversation as a leader to get what is needed and real solutions. So I think that it's going to be very important to have conversations with our local law enforcement, which I've done since I ran the first time. You know, I've talked Mascara in the Fort Pierce Police Department with Chief Diane, who was some of the first people I came to about my decriminalization thing. And, you know, and just talking, building relationships with them. I have people in my own family who are law enforcement, so I'm trying to show people how you can stand for Black Lives Matter and understand that we have local law enforcement, how we can protect them and give them better wages, you know, and make sure that they are safe, too. You can stand for both, but to be afraid to have a conversation on either side is dangerous. So that's why I'm willing and wanting to work with the Sheriff Department, work with the Police Departments, and make sure we have real reform as well, because I want to have a real conversation about criminal justice reform, though I know that he's a constitutional officer. We do have leverage in the sense of us, you know, approving their budget, and there's a way to have a conversation about how we can work together. So I'm aware of the position that constitutional officers play. So what I'm saying is, I can build a relationship that can make it more cohesive to partner together to have innovative solutions to create a safer, a healthier community for everyone. And I think you really can have a real conversation about using federal grant funding that already exists to get body cameras, so that we can be held accountable. And I think our local Police Department and Sheriff Department is willing and wanting to have body cameras.
Okay, same question. We'll come back to Ms. Townsend. How will you work to improve the trust and relationship between law enforcement and the community, specifically people of color?
Well, first of all, I support body cameras. I think it's imperative, because it protects both. I think it protects the resident and it protects the deputy. I think that that's one of the smartest things that could happen throughout the whole entire United States. I think every officer should have one on him in every car. As far as the relationships go, we need, I know that our sheriff has a unit of people of color down in Lincoln Park area, and I think that there needs to be more substations. And I think that they need to be out there, they need to be engaged a little bit more to the community. I mean, right now, our city of Fort Pierce Police Department is challenged. They don't have enough officers, and so our Sheriff's Department is having to back them up. And because we're in crazy times right now, I don't, they really have the time to do that. But I do think that before a lot of this happened, they were bridging that gap. I think the school resource officers in the school are identifying things. And I think that as the deputies go out and they meet with the people and they engage and they can create those relationships, because that's what it's really about. It's about relationships. I don't think anybody wants to be wrong and go to jail. I mean, the people that do wrong and go to jail are the people that they don't trust, you know. It's because there's underlying issues. And so the only way to fix this is to bridge that gap, is to have relationships. Our law enforcement, our elected officials, I go out and I have relationships with people of color all the time. I have a great relationship with a lot of those people down there. You know, a lot of them have come to me and asked to have certain things for recreation, and I've done that. So we need to start, I think, by letting the VOCC find a way to fund the body cameras, because I think that gives everybody a peace of mind and a comfort level to know that we're both protected on both sides. I think that would be a very big beginning to start the trust, and then it has to come from communicating and building relationships.
Okay, and I believe we have one more question. Now we'll be coming back to Kathy Townsend. The words of elected officials matter, whether current or in the past. How do elected officials convince voters they will work for everyone if their past statements don't support that?
Well, I really don't know how to respond to that, because I would hope anybody running for office, first of all, I want to say thank you. I want to say thank you to anybody that's willing to step up and run for office, because it's a process, and you learn so much, and you get so much education, and you meet so many wonderful people, and you find out so much about our community that you really don't know. Even if you're somebody that's engaged in this community, it's amazing what you find out. And I would hope that anybody running for office is not running for office because they want entitlement or control or power. I would hope that they're running because they want to make a difference. They want to be a part of the future. They want to be a public servant. They're there to fix things, because there is a lot of issues and there's a lot of things that are broken that need to be fixed. And so for me, if I say I'm going to do something, I try to honor my word and I try to keep my promises. And I'm just sad that somebody would even ask that question because I would hope that nobody running for office is not running for office that would not keep their word by what they say they're going to run on.
Okay, we need to go to Mr. DuHart for that question. The words of elected officials matter, whether current or in the past. How do elected officials convince voters they will work for everyone if their past statements don't support that?
I don't, I mean, I feel like you know, you know somebody by the fruit they bear. So if someone has represented themselves in a way and shown what they, and consistent about it, and around election time it changes, I don't think there's really a way to move forward. Before you run for office, you have to have it together. Before you run for office, you should have been representing who you were. You don't change your mind when you want someone's vote or change your mind when you're in the sphere of a person. I'm Henry DuHart. Henry DuHart, I sing, I've always been a singer, I've always been an artist. I'm very proud to be an activist. I'm very proud to stand for Black Lives Matter and Hispanic Lives Matter and White Lives Matter. You know, I'm very, I can stand in all those places and have a conversation in all those places and have multiple types of relationships throughout this community. I've have, you know, at this point, I've developed friendships throughout this county. I have friends on, who live on the island, who live in Lake Park, who live in the streets, who don't live anywhere, who live in Southport, St. Lucie. So I think I've shown that I'm that kind of person since the beginning, not just when I started running for office. But if you know me and you talk to anybody who knows me, I've always been this kind of person. And I didn't change my rank of office. In fact, a lot of my opposition comes from the fact that I am who I am and proud of it. So for me, I'm going to continue to do that. My, the fruit that I bear was there before I ran for office, you know? So I don't know how you really change once you run for office. I think it's too late then. I think you should have had, before you ran, that those characters, character pieces about you should have been there. Because what happens after November 3rd, when you win? Do you go back to those same characteristics, those same thoughts? So for me, you know, I try my best to keep my head up, to keep my head straight, to not, you know, respond to the hate. You know, I get a lot of hate mail, a lot of ignorant things, you know? But it's very important to say true to who you are and to not allow anyone to tell you what is possible for yourself. And I've been that type of believer, and I will continue to aspire after November 3rd, and I'll be Henry before and after November 3rd. Because I keep my promise.
We have a lot of questions from our Facebook audience, one more here. How will you work to help the homeless community of St. Lucie County? Mr. DuHart?
So a few weeks ago, while I was on, in my hometown at Raiset, which is a restaurant that a lot of people know about in Fort Pierce, I just had this realization, it was raining, and I realized that the homeless community in our community is getting younger, you know? And I seen someone who I knew from school. I went to school with this young man, he came and asked me for a dollar or something. And it just hit me that, you know, people talk all day about wanting to build a shelter here, wanting to help the community, especially during the election cycle. People love to put on gloves and help feed poor people food. But what were you before? Why haven't you used the properties that we own to build a sustainable shelter and put in organizations such as Angels of Hope and Mike out of Vero and a lot of other organizations who do a lot like Pastor Hazel with Image of Hope and organize them, get them a building, and give them the resources? It doesn't take, it's not hard to build a shelter that has rehabilitation, mental health counseling, has connections to industries and apprenticeship programs and trades, and helps our veterans. We have veterans sleeping in vans at our beaches. I met a man who was homeless, who was a veteran at our beach. So I know that it's good to talk about it during the election cycle that you want to help the homeless. One of the major things I'm going to do is work with our investment funds that we already have with, at the clever course, and invest in a real rehabilitation center that gives people that second, third, or fifth chance for temporary housing, for training, for food assistance, for mental health counseling, and create a system that doesn't shelter, but rehabilitates and gives them a handoff, gives them that push to get back to our community. And that's what I want to build. When I first ran for city commission, I had the idea to create a Joanne, a Joanne Rehabilitation Center, a second chance center. Joanne Robinson is my grandmother, and she's always helped my entire life. And this center will be inspired by her, and it will give help so that we don't have a homeless issue within the next four to eight years. We have a lower population, and we do all the help. People should not be dying and sleeping in our preserves, in our wooded areas. I'm going to go out there and reach those people, I'm going to stand by that.
Okay, for Kathy Townsend, how would you help the homeless community?
Well, I'm blessed to say, Carol, that I'm already helping them. And so I'm personal friends with Angels of Hope. David and Kelly do an amazing job. I wish that we could find a way to really get them because they are salt to the earth, 100% to the homeless. They're boots on the ground in the camps, and they're the real deal. Grace Wade Village is underway, they have obtained their land, and they're going after the families. And the county is in the process of purchasing the first piece of property, the first start housing, the first eight homeless veterans. So it's a beginning, it's not where we need to be. This is, we have the funding in place, and we have the land that we could probably start a shelter, but it's sustainability. It's very expensive to be able to put something up and bring people in and have the employment staff to do it. So we have to find a way to be able to have the funds there to be able to maintain it year after year after year. That money's not in our budget. So if we come up with the money to do it, we have to find a way to keep it. And so one of the things I'm proposing is I want to have a transitional living facility at our jail. That would cut down on some of the homelessness because some of the men and women coming out of there, they have no place to go. So they go and they still, and they get a honey bun to go back because they have medical care, dental care. And so if we could have a transitional place where they know they have a place to go, they know they have a job, or work on a bus stop also out there, that's, if 1% of those can be placed. I, that is the reason why I chose to run again this term, is because I wanted to have a homeless shelter. And I know that we are headed in the right direction. And I believe that if I'm elected again and have the privilege of being a public servant in the next four years, I believe we will get there. Those conversations are already in process. And it is here, and it's another pandemic we have in St. Lucie County, and it needs to be addressed. So I am thankful for the person that brought that question up because obviously they're mindful of this situation. And it's sad that we have 1,400 homeless children living in St. Lucie County, not to talk about our veterans and our other homeless people.
Okay, well, thank you. I believe we have come to the end of our questions and our Facebook questions. A lot of participation tonight. So we're at the closing statements, and we'll start with Kathy Townsend.
So again, thank you, Carol, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this on. It's, it's always great to help educate. And I know that during these crazy times right now of COVID, this is the stuff people are turning to, to be able to learn and educate themselves about candidates running for office. I ran in 2016 as a local businesswoman. I've owned my own business since I was 19 years old. And I have had multiple businesses here in St. Lucie County. And when I ran in 16, I made my promises, and I have fulfilled those promises, and I've kept them. And 2020 came along, we've had crazy, uncharted times. And who would have known we'd be going through this? But I'm a believer that when things are working and things are going in the right direction, you just don't change that path. And so I, again, I'm looking to assist with a homeless shelter. I'm looking to put that in place. And I know that the beginnings are there. Our airport is another thing that I'm passionate about, that I know we're moving in the right direction, and we're there. And I know that if I am blessed to be able to serve the great people of St. Lucie County for another four years, I know that over the next four years, we will get there with our biggest economic growth at the airport and to be able to have homelessness addressed in this county. And I'm proud to say that in the last four years, obstacles and the hurdles that we've had to overcome, this board has done that. And St. Lucie County is positioned, and we're headed in the right direction. So thank you, everybody that's watching. Thank you, Carol. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting this on. And I'm excited for what 2021's going to bring.
Okay, and next, closing statement, Henry DuHart.
I'm excited to become the youngest, most, you know, elected official in St. Lucie County at 26, because I think that's going to inspire a lot of young people to challenge what is possible for themselves. Because if Henry can do it, what can I do? Can I start my own business? Can I start a nonprofit? Can I run for office? So I'm very excited, not only the things I want to do when it comes to the airport and developing it, make sure we have affordable housing throughout our community, make sure we secure home security as a human right in our community. We have real reform within our criminal justice system so that we don't create cycles, we create situations for people to get better, and really, really make sure that we have a real center by the end of sometime. Because things are expensive, but to talk, you know, it's about priorities, not expense. Because everything is expensive in the county, but what are your priorities? And Henry's priority will be a shelter, no matter how expensive that is.